I'd like to call to the regular opening of the Westbridge Waters School meeting. If you could please stand for the plate changes. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic which stands our nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. And number one silence. Thank you for listening to that as an agenda although recently anticipated by the chair which made me discuss at this meeting. Now all items listed may be back for discussion and the other items not listed may also be brought up for discussion to the U.S. Department by law. This meeting is being videotaped for clear. I'd like to start with a motion for the three hundred minutes from the November sixteenth point of the meeting.
Move second.
Move second. Any discussion? On it.
All right.
Thank you. And before we continue, I'd like to welcome us to EK, Marissa Excuse me, Molinari. Thank you, Marissa. And under recognitions, we have a few recognitions tonight. Mrs. Spencer will give the first recognition for the award of the peace poster. Yes, at the Howard School every year, the Lions Club has supported or sponsored the peace poster contest and our sixth grade students voluntarily can make posters to represent what peace means to them. And competition is very tough because we have a lot of talented artists in sixth grade. And this year, our winner's poster was beautifully done and the poster goes from the Howard School where it gets selected as the winner and it moves on to a further competition through the Lions Club. So the winner this year, Matthew Fredrickson, if you could come up now. Congratulations. Now we're cheering him but for the cast. Thank you, Natalie. And our second recognition tonight is to recognize the retirement of Deputy Chief Paul Gold, also known as Sparky. A person of face who soon will move him on for the peace project. From Westbridge Waters Fire Project, Deputy Chief Paul Gold will be retiring after forty years with the department and nearly four years of its second ranking officer. Mr. Gold joined the department in July nineteen seventy-five, earning promotions to lieutenant in nineteen eighty-four, captain in two thousand and four, and deputy chief in two thousand and eleven. He has been visible in the community over the years for his work conducting fire safety education programs both in the schools and at the seniors' center. So on behalf of the Westbridge Waters School meeting, we would like to congratulate you and thank you for all.
Thank you very much. Over the past thirty-four years, I was in the fire prevention town of Westbridge Waters. And I started all talking in the first, second, third grades at the ball school. And then it changed to Mrs. Frances Alonster going to Straight Street School with the pre-k kindergarten kindergarten. And extended when she moved on through the college school up to the sixth grade. So over those years, I was talking to about six hundred kids from just the Westbridge Waters school system and another three hundred, four hundred, and the daycare centers around now. We were able to get from the state approximately seventy-five thousand of more dollars for fire prevention materials for the candidates and the students. And we have used the fire safety trailer that we have around the town for the county to give you which show fire safety and hopefully you get the knowledge of fire safety into the box behind everybody when they go to go off on their own. And through the working of the high school, I was able to start a program with the seniors going off to college by safety so they could think about reentering what they had to do, hear fire alarm, just don't fall seriously. I'm not thinking about it, they should think about fire safety. So hopefully, all of our children for the past thirty-four years and in the future will say all of itself very loud, "We're the fire brigade." Thank you very much.
And the superintendent's update, Dr. Opey. We have the Westbridge Waters Wild Cats athletic team update.
After the season, I try to feel a little bit on the past season to show you the great things that our athletics teams are doing in Westbridge Waters and continue to do. So I have a few things to say about the fall season because once again, we've had a very successful season from both the boys and girls side. So I'll just put this in my life, starting with Phil Toffey. They ended the season with a seven-ten record and four in the league. And it was more of a growing, growing year this year. But Maddie Shea and Sophie Morse may follow the All-Stars. And the best win that the girls showed this season was against Somerset birthday after a tough loss the first time around in the after-year. Classy football, team that a winning season with seven wins and four losses and just missed the league championship with a very tight day, tight loss to the end of the year. This year, the football program filled with a freshman team for the first time in a long time and they posted a record of five wins and one loss. So that shows the future of the program and that's very good. So they should be proud of how we represented the football program that won the Central City High School. The girls soccer, the team finished the season with a twelve-and-eight record season, qualified them for the state tournament. And one of the highlights of the season was defeating Brockton for the first time. They graduate eight seniors, but they're looking forward to next season when they start to lead the road across the classroom. For boys soccer, they finished the season with a seven-ten-and-one record. Junior Dylan Grechner and sophomore Sean Wilburn tied for the best. For the team best nine holes on the season, while freshman Lucas Sarantoppo was re-selected as a Mayflower All-Star. Marsley cheerleading competed this year in three different competitions and got first place at the Invitational at Olivera's High School where the girls had the best performance. Then they came third at the Mayflower League competition. And this third place gave them the opportunity for the regionals for the first time in ten years where they placed sixth. So congratulations. So they're looking at that program and that is very interesting. In golf, the golf team had a successful season with nine wins and three losses this year. Leader captain Brad Nolan only lost one match this year and he also showed his ability consistently shooting his score. The golf team is full of leaders and skilled players who had lots of fun in the course and are excited to come back and actually do the thing. Boys and girls cross country, the boys team finished thirteenth overall in the Easton Mass Small School Championships. And it was the sixth straight season that they finished in the top fifteen places. The team this year had a record of thirty-nine members. Now anyone who knows anything about cross country knows that is a lot of things that the cross country team. So I don't know what he gets from him, he's healthy there, but he gets a lot of hits. They finished with an overall record of ten and five. Brian Campbell was named for the Mayflower All-Star team to assert third consecutive year and he was joined on the squad by Slappoint in Eastbury. Brian Campbell and Steve Savoy became just the third and fourth Wildcat boys over the past twenty seasons to break under eighteen minutes in our high school by the papers. Girls cross country team finished once again with the best season in team history. At the Easton Mass Small School Championships, the team finished in the very place, the highest level for a Westbridge Waters cross-country squad. They qualified for the mass state league and they competed against the best small schools in the following. Upon last year's state league performance, they finished sixteenth overall with an average five playtime of twenty minutes and thirty seconds. They had a fourteen-and-one record and the team won their eleventh straight Mayflower contest title. So congratulations to all the fall teams and all athletes. They did a great job and they are up and running into the horses again. So it was exciting things here. And the nice thing about this fall season, also, they still managed to do great things. And I don't want to jinx ourselves by saying this, but next fall for the fall season, we should be back home here in Westbridge Waters. So that would be nice. You can see how it's taking place out there. And you can actually come up here and see what the field looks like this season. So the fall will be the first season at the Westbridge Waters squad. So we expect it to be better than on the pump and the buses and all of the facilities in Massachusetts trying to get practice ten minutes. So we're going to break it off.
Thank you, Dr. Opey. And now the update on the Livingston High School school building update.
The punch list is getting smaller and smaller, which is a good thing. The contractors and subcontractors have been coming back and doing a lot. They have to do it after school hours, so we're coming after school, doing it when we have half-days in the afternoon and also on weekends, we're a lot of people around over there doing different work. So slowly but surely, they're punching away at the list. And we have a few larger projects that still need to be finished and over the next several months that should be taking place. But we've had training on all the technologies, so the technology is up to date. There has been training on the lighting system and the security system that is taking place. So that's taking shape now. So it's really just getting all those people back in. And it seems like it's late to be doing the training, however, you want the systems to be completely up and running and tested before you train them. So when they're training them, they don't say, "Oh, we can't train this, we can't train this." So that's what takes a little while. So, you know, it's a slow process, but we're getting there. The best thing is beautiful building and the kids love it and the teachers love it and they're bringing more out of it. So that's reality. School building update.
Thank you again. And the last update, the park progress.
So I'm going to get there and do a park. As you know, we opted to take park tests last year after taking the M-Pass for many years. And we saw that as a chance to see what a 21st century assessment was like, to take a computerized test and to really see what a rigorous test was all about. Especially because at that time, we didn't really know, well, probably we learned that. But we knew that our kids were up for the challenge, so we went with the park last year. And we received results. And I just want to go, I'm going to briefly go over the results for you, not going to go in-depth with stands and the standards and all that stuff. I just wanted to briefly give you an idea of how we did it the first time around. The major differences were the M-Pass and the park were that we have a different scoring system. We went from a four-tiered scoring system of the financial condition, needs improvement and warning, two or five steps. I'll show you in a bit. The other difference was that the park is a timed test and the M-Pass was an un timed test, which is really a big difference. And honestly, there are some kids that when you say a test is un timed, truly, truly take off eggs to do the test. It's a little too much analysis, but it was different, it was to get used to this kind of test. The third and probably major difference was that it was a completely computerized, computer-based test, which is a different way to take a test because of different drop boxes, there's different spaces to put the rases in, there might have been some glitches and stuff. But those were the three major differences. And because of the rigor of the exam and the fact that any time you implement something new, a computerized test or something that's new, you always get a sort of implementation error. And that's expected, which is one of the reasons, the other reason that we really wanted to go for the park is we figured if we're going in this direction with a 21st century next-generation assessment, it's going to be computerized, whether it's called CARP or M-Pass or whatever, why not give our kids as much practice as possible? Because you're going to look at how they get when they first start. So we did go with it. Before I go over the results, the park achievement levels are a little different than what we had before. And it's just labeled levels five, four, three, two, one. And you can see that they exceeded expectations, four is met expectations. So once I go, we really would like to have as many kids as possible, we'd love to have all kids in levels four and five. Level three is approached expectations and then partially met expectations, did not meet expectations. So how does that really jive with the four labels that we have and the four levels that we had are head-to-head? When I was looking at the scored, the scaled scores between the park and between M-Pass, the upper level of level three, if you look at, based on the scale scores, the upper level of level three was the lower level, some of the lower level was proficient. So this is more rigorous. Therefore, when parents, you know, the kid was proficient on M-Pass and then they get level three, and if people look at it and say, "What's that mean?", they're just approaching the expectation. But on the M-Pass, it was proficient. So it is in a test that expects more, it does have higher expectations, it does have more rigor. And I guess the best way to describe it is the M-Pass tested to see if the kid was ready to graduate from high school. The park tests whether or not a kid was ready for college in the year. And when you think about that, that's a big difference. So that's why I consider it a more rigorous. And they want to give you the achievement levels so that you can have an understanding type of, again, just giving you any overview. No, no, yeah, you can see this. If I can see, you can. So I'm just going to leave my little chesty pointer here, go on some things. I'm going to look at level four and five together and we'll look at the district and the state. And you can see then they split up five separate, four separate, three, two, and one. But I think what we want to concentrate on is we'll look at how we did for this first time versus how the rest of the state. And I can say that when I first got these results, as I'm going to test you because she's the one that came to me first with the results, I kind of freaked out a little bit because I'm using a higher numbers when we looked at M-Pass. But we had taken the M-Pass for so long, so I had to put it in perspective and I did. And looked at us versus the state and the course because, I guess some people are probably loyal, I actually started looking at all the other scores from area towns and found out that we were still higher than the ones that we usually, I don't know if we built them, but we still have our identity. So anyway, I just wanted to kind of say that. So we actually did our, if you see that, there's some definitely some more areas we have to look at than others. But just as an overview, you can see that in grade three ELA, we were above, of the state average, we were sixty-two and the state was fifty-four. And that's, you know, how many, the percentage of students in that, in that subject. Grade three mathematics, again, fairly well above the state. Grade four, grade four math, ELA killed it, but they were well above the state average. And grade four math, again, well above the state average. Grade five was the same as the state average in ELA and they were slightly above in mathematics. Grade six, you can see, was the same as the state in ELA. And this is one of the areas that we were concerned with because in mathematics, there was, that was one of the areas that we were below the state. And that's something that we have some ideas about and that we're looking at, but, you know, there's a lot that goes into this. And, you know, we talked about, we'll talk about it again, but talk about some of the things that could just be with the testing also. It's not just looking at content at this point, but we will do that. Grade seven ELA, a bit higher than the state. Grade seven math, higher than the state. Grade eight ELA, that was another area we want to look at, which was below the state and surprising because of how high, year after year, grade eight ELA was in M-Pass, always in that like eighty percent proficient area. So that needs more analysis to see, was it questions, was it computer, I mean, you don't have, you know, again, this is the first time, this is just an overview. We still have to drill down into the data and look more closely. Now, grade eight math, I want to talk about, you need to talk about grade eight math and grade eight Algebra One together. Because we have an accelerated track or an accelerated group of kids in eighth grade that are not taking grade eight math, who are taking Algebra One. And they actually take it with a high school. They take it with, as a ninth grade class, okay? So these kids, all the kids taking Algebra ready in this test. And then the kids that score above a certain amount in eighth grade take Algebra One with the high schools each other. They got to take a pure Algebra One test. So this accelerated group, you can see, took Algebra One and was well above the state and ninety-two percent in four and five. So, you know, that's excellent. So I think we can say something. They cautioned us about eighth graders taking Algebra. And the park people, the state said, "If it's not a true Algebra course, do not have to take it because this Algebra test is very, very difficult, rigorous." So I think you could see that our Algebra One course is very well done. So that's why when you see grade eight math is below the state, not every school did what we did. Some schools, their entire eighth grade took the eighth grade math test. Not everyone pulled out and did Algebra. So our accelerated kids were not in our grade eight, grade eight scores, okay? But yet, in the state, there were some accelerated kids in the grade eight math because some schools didn't opt to put kids in Algebra One. Yeah, actually, most that we surveyed didn't even do the Algebra One. So considering that it was forty-five percent four and five, fifty-three, when, you know, our accelerated kids weren't in there that were taking Algebra, that's actually, I think, pretty good. So you have to look at it together because if you don't, you say, "How come fifty-three happens below?" But that would be interesting to find out if people opt for the Algebra next year. So those are some of the things, you know, and we're going to look at what we, the same types of things we looked at with M-Pass. And we'll go through and we'll look at the content. We'll look at making sure that we're aligned in the curriculum. We'll look at were things covered and aren't covered or were the question, and honestly, it was the first time they'd given this test and it wasn't pilot or just a trial. So just like in M-Pass when it was in the early days, there could be a question that now they're looking at going, "Okay, that was a bad question." That doesn't, you know, so it could be something as simple as that. In some of the areas, it may have been, and I don't know, we could probably go all the fact, like the sixth grade, were there computer glitches at that time? The system has gotten a lot better, but it was the first time. And it wasn't actually on the Westbridge Waters side because we, over the summer before last, came in and we upgraded the infrastructure at all the elementary schools. So you should be able to have all these chromebooks on at the same time. What we felt, found was it was on TSN side and sometimes kids would go in and then they just lose their work or something like that. Well, that causes frustration. So that's a bigger thing than you think for scores. And that's how the invitational did. I don't know if that's something that happened with math, but we're going to look at all sides of that because our sixth grade math scores in M-Pass were always great. So that's another reason why I looked at and said, "Wow, we've got to figure out why this happened." Because I think it's just a blip, you know, that we won't be able to figure out. Same thing with the grade eight ELA. You know, it's not that much below the state, but we're usually well above it. So let's look at it and see that it could be a similar, similar type situation. But honestly, overall, for the first time, we should be pleased because now we have a baseline and the stress is off. They didn't know what the teachers, the kids, like, "Oh, what's this talk, what's it going to be like?" Especially teachers who have a pretty stressed, they know now. So not that it's not going to be stressful or not going to be working on it, but it's not going to be the same thing. And now they have set up data to look at. It's hard to go into something and say, "Okay, we don't really know what the exercise is. We did the best we could, they gave us ideas." But now they actually know. And they're fixing something with that and they're, you know, it's a process, a growing process. So the next steps, as I looked at some of the data, we need to examine the subgroup performance, subgroup meeting, special education, for us, three years launch, Title One, those types of things. And recommend program instructional changes for the high-nage group, which are, you know, we all have balls into that, and special education subgroups. So we really need to drill down to those subgroups and see what we can do and how we can recommend some of these, these changes. We need the teachers and the buildings to examine the released test items. They did release the test items in two thousand and fifteen, they're online. They also released sample student work and rubrics. And by looking at those released test items and seeing what some sample student work is, it's going to give teachers and kids a better idea of, "Oh, this is why I only got it two," or "This is a four or five." And with the rubrics there, teachers can look at it and get a better understanding. But also, there's a lot of exercises that you can do with students with that work and see what they do great things before you have a better idea of it. And then make appropriate curriculum instruction changes in math in ELA that we feel will make a difference and that we need. We will be taking the park again in two thousand and sixteen, embrace three through eight. And one of the changes they made, if you recall last year, I think the schools three through eight felt like they came back from February vacation and basically they tested until June. And so in just when they finished the March test, they took them up in the app, they stopped and said, "Okay, we have two weeks and then we start another one." It was, that was stressful itself. So park heard the outcry from probably every principal, teacher of the state that took park. And they're going to take the performance-based assessment and the end-of-year assessment and put it together in one large assessment like M-Pass was, and it's going to be a med. It's a long window, but it's at the end of the year. I think that's good too because it also gives teachers in that class, they feel a little bit more confident getting the material in before they get tested. So I think that should make a difference and we'll see what that looks like. We also have to transition to M-Pass two-point-O. The commissioner of education recommended that instead of going with park or going with M-Pass, kind of putting together a hybrid that he called M-Pass two-point-O, so the next generation M-Pass. And the State Board of Education did. next generation M-Pass, um, and the state board of education did fold that in. And that will start in two thousand seventeen. We don't know exactly what that will look like, but listening to different conversations around the state, having different things, press releases and stuff coming out from the commissioner, I believe it will be much, it will be PARC with a few M-Pass things thrown in, but I don't really even think it will be M-Pass questions thrown in. I think it will just be M-Pass because it will be us putting it together. But we'll still be purch, we're still going to be in the PARC consortium. We're going to be purchasing questions and parts of the test from, from the PARC consortium. So I believe it will just be a PARC test for us. So again, I think we made a good decision going with PARC because what that does, it gave us practice last year, practice this year, next year. Um, it will also give us practice because they won't really count as far as accountability until the fall. So we've got three years under our belt. And we'll go computerized again this year. But the other thing is because we went one-to-one, starting in September, three K through twelve, kids are using Chromebooks for everything now. And when you're used to that, it's going to be easier when you take the test. So there's a lot of things that we've been, uh, putting into place already. But one thing I wanted to just, um, let you know is the high school tenth grade competency determination test, and that's in math in ELA that they take in tenth grade, will be M-Pass through the class of two thousand nineteen, which is this current freshman class. So unless it changes, which it could, unless it changes, as of right now, the current eighth grade class will have some type of competency determination test, which I don't know what it will be or what grade or how they'll set it up, they will be the first ones to take it in the PARC format. That subject, that could change. Um, because then, I don't know if they take it sophomore or junior, we don't, we don't really know how it'll be set up. So, but right now, we know that the freshmen sophomore issue will, will take away the rate. So I would think though, they want to transition to the M-Pass two point O before they go to that, so it could get pushed off. Because this decision on the two thousand nineteen was done before they did the vote for M-Pass two point O. And by two thousand nineteen, M-Pass two point O will be mandatory that it's computerized. So the people, people in seventeen and eighteen, if they don't have enough computers, if they don't have infrastructure, can still take this M-Pass two point O paper pencil, but by two thousand nineteen, everyone is going to be, it's not going to opt for paper pencil and ask their data computer based. And that will be all M-Pass tests. So I think, again, we're ahead of the game by doing this correctly. So, um, you know, some of the things we've already looked at, the elementary, and I noticed that our writing wasn't as strong as our reading comprehension on the PARC. And lo and behold, the teachers already knew that because they're already working with enhancement to look in different writing programs and sort of enhance the writing program. Um, the full implementation of the Envision Math Program, which is much more like the Common Core and asks a lot of questions that are multi-step problems and so on and so forth. So implementing the Envision Program should make a difference in mathematics. We're looking at something simple like in sixth grade, just trying to get more time for math in sixth grade because it's a short period, it's only fifty-five minutes and your kids getting in, settling, you know, down and then having to get their stuff together. You're really down to forty-five minutes. And the Envision Math Program at a minimum wants a full hour of instruction. So that's a problem. So we're looking at a lot of different things that we think will make a difference and, um, we'll look at more and I think we've got a good, I think we've got a good idea of what PARC can all about. And again, I think we have a good idea of what M-Pass will be. It shouldn't be that much different for us. I don't know if you have any questions or comments?
I just, I would just like to comment and say that I totally support your approach to this. I think we ran on one of those, I think just that right now. Um, I'm surprised that there's still some districts that are opting not to do that. So that would be two years that it's been offered, but we can't write it yet.
I know, and it's interesting because we've been having the data set, the assistant superintendent approve and also the superintendent by house report. And people are like, well, I don't know what I want, you know, if we're going to import this or, you know, stay with M-Pass. And honestly, and I've said it several times, I really don't see the downside of running the PARC right now because they're going to hold you harmless, so it's not going to affect your accountability rating. And unless, I can't imagine that they're going to change and go backwards to paper pencil, old fashioned app. They're not going to. They took all that time to get it out and a whole board loaded on it and this is what the current governor wants now. So I just, I don't understand. But there are several districts that are sticking with M-Pass again because they said, well, no, because then we'll want, um, you know, why go to PARC and then go to M-Pass two point O? Because it is a different test, except for the fact that I think getting the practice on the computer-based test, getting the practice with the multi-step questions with a different form of writing that they expect, I think that's invaluable. And to be able to have three of it as opposed to the LAP one is pretty cool. Just getting the glitches out of the whole infrastructure of, of teachers now, don't forget, all the sort of teachers now is troubleshooting with someone on their home with these computerized tests. That takes a while to get used to. So if you're putting people into a high-stakes situation where, all right, now here's the first test and you haven't done this before, we saw the headaches that we had last year. So I think it's going to get easier in the near future. But, you know, and I've actually heard some people say, because we still don't know, we still think they might go back down to that. I don't think so. It's the only first century. They, they put too much money into the infrastructure of technology to say that they're going back to the, 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 but I just don't see it.
I mean, it's a very serious first, and it's true that you see how you can do it in the middle of the process, I'll just ask, because the teachers are troubleshooting and then they're troubleshooting. So they're like, spare us, or writing, or writing that, it's supposed to be very complicated. I mean, the M-Pass two point O is just like all the smart things, you know, they have like the three point O or the four point O, I mean, it's just, it's a big, it's a nightmare to use cell phones, you know?
A new version. And, you know, it's, one of the reasons that when we went with Envision Math, the biggest thing that teachers wanted was they liked Envision because they loved the digital, digital part of it. And there are computerized tests, but not just that, there's the videos, there's the, you know, we eventually will go completely digital with it and they have a digital interactive textbook, which they can get into now, but they're not fully into it yet. And so if all of the instructions like that, why wouldn't we be assessing it like that? And think about different things like the nursing board, nursing board and other tests, professional tests that people have to take. I mean, heck, they could permit tests on the computer, so I just don't see us going back to it, if that makes sense.
So that's the PARC overview and we're just going to go to the next one. Thank you, Dr. Lee. Under business, we have a field trip for two Costa Rica, Mr. Bottel and this is Serrida.
Excellent. Yeah, we did two trips to New York City. Uh, the first one on Saturday, January twenty-third, will be our students, twelve of our students from West Bridgewater, a lot of new students from Costa Rica, teachers from West Bridgewater and Costa Rica, plus three parents from West Bridgewater. So it's a fairly small group, but on Saturday, we're hoping they're filling. Both for the trips up to suburban courts and the, you know, it's a long day, but maybe six thirty in the morning, four, eleven, eleven, eleven. My, my, my.
Excellent. And here in motion, make a motion to approve that. Move and second, any discussion? And this again is for both fielders.
Well, the second one is going to be in March.
Okay. Okay, that's all right.
Yep.
Excellent. So, uh, any discussion on favor?
Aye.
Thank you. And the second one?
The second one's in March, it's on Friday, it's West Bridgewater students and teachers. Um, we're hoping to have eighties and nineties, it's ideally going to be suited for our seniors. Um, but if you don't have enough for long, then we'll be back in the classroom. We have two suburban and that way it's less of a timeline, so we'll be going with that.
Do you have a question?
Move, second.
Move to the second, any discussion on favor?
Aye.
Great. Thank you, Mr. Bottel. And under the last element of business is, uh, Mr. Bottel with museum office, the administration of new Chris P. Davis survey for grades nine through twelve.
Hello. So this is the second time that we believe there's been a survey. First time was, um, two thousand twelve, two thousand thirteen school year. Um, so basically the survey is something put forth by the CDC to assess the governance of, um, health risk behaviors to high school students. And as this is our second time, if we want to determine if there's been increase or decrease of our, um, years of students, so we're going to have a fair amount.
Right now, motion? Any kind of motions for the administration of the, this, that, so, that's a matter of fact. Move. And second, any discussion on favor?
Aye.
Great. Thank you very much, everyone else. Thank you, Mr. Bottel. And now it will be approval of policies.
Yeah.
The first one is policy number five hundred, the no asking policy. I had that, I had that policy, I did it good, and I did reach out to the administration and everybody got back to me with no comments or changes. So I'd like to, um, present it without any change. And.
Move.
Move to the second, all favor?
Aye.
Great, thank you. And the second one is policy seventy-two hundred, the finance policy. I've been discussing with Mrs. Smith. And so we're going to postpone it, because of the quite extensive changes to the state bags and so forth, um, for the federal grants. So we're going to postpone that so, um, Mrs. Smith can have a chance to make sure that all the two policy is up. Thank you very much. Um, policy sixty-three hundred is the student safety policy. That was Mrs. Smith and myself. Uh, we, um, had presented that policy, uh, to the Safe Schools Committee. Uh, Mr. Bottel had, um, presented that. We had made, um, a few minor changes just to incorporate other categories for CPR training, include all athletic coaches. There's four changes moving red. This is, this is great. Um, so we'd like to present the policy as presented. Would you like to present the policy with the changes as noted? So I'd like to make a motion to approve the policy with the changes.
Second.
Move and second, any discussion on favor?
Aye.
Great, thank you very much. Thank you, Mr. Bottel, for your help on that. Um, and then the last is the, uh, school crisis management protocol, again, that's Mrs. Smith and myself. And again, in the Safe Schools, uh, meeting forum, we had presented that. Um, and we had the extensive, um, updating, streamlining, convincing, uh, procedural policy changes to that. So I'd like to, um, present that as noted with all of the changes I believe that were highlighted in this version.
Yes.
Did I have a motion?
Move and second.
Move and second. Any discussion on favor?
Aye.
Great. Again, then Mr. Bottel and everyone else who participated in all those discussions with Summer. And now we have the assignment policies. Uh, policy one oh one, the school calendar policy. So if anyone is interested in, as in the plan, and we have policy two thousand, which is the administration policy. Actually, I would take that one. Would you like to run that? Excellent, thank you very much. And last but not least is the learning policy. I'm not sure if Mrs. Smith does it or not, I think, from the six twos. Excellent, thank you so much.
Before we go on, go to lines. Let's just bring one more thing out. Um, on Wednesday, yeah, Wednesday evening, um, Mr. Bottel, myself, Chief Clark and Lieutenant Flaherty will be presenting to the selectmen, um, on the idea of, uh, school resource officer for the district. And, um, that starts at seven ten, so I don't know if, um, if anyone's interested in that. But we are one of the few districts in southeast of Massachusetts that does not have a school resource officer. We have a dear officer and, um, the officers do, do routine check on their rounds during the day, they come into the buildings and they go off in the building, but we don't have a dedicated school resource officer. And so we are going to, please, in order to, not bother to see if the town or see if the selectmen in some way would support that and, um, support the police budget to give to, um, add a school resources officer to the police budget. So if you're interested, I'd like to support that.
Thank you, Dr. Lee. And under warrants, uh, is, the first one is twenty-five A, dated December seventeenth, two thousand fifteen, and you won three hundred and ninety-nine thousand, nine hundred and sixty-eight dollars and eighty cents. Now I believe that, um, Mr. Bottel, can you say, do you want to roll call this?
Yes.
Thank you. Uh, all favor?
Aye.
Aye. Great, thank you. And warrant number twenty-five B, dated December seventeenth, two thousand fifteen, and you won one hundred and three thousand, one hundred and twenty-nine dollars and fifty-two cents. And warrant twenty-five C, dated December seventeenth, two thousand fifteen, and you won eight thousand, forty dollars and eighty-three cents. And I have a motion.
Perfect.
Move and second, all favor?
Aye.
Great, thank you. Under the public forum, members of the audience wishing to address the committee need to serve at this time. Audience members are reminded that personal issues, personality issues to be, or issues that violate student confidentiality cannot be addressed during this public forum. And then we'll talk to the Cali, um, under the other section, December twenty-third through January third, two thousand and sixteen, for the winter break. All students will return to school on January fourth, two thousand and sixteen. And the middle, senior, high school calendar, December fifteenth, school improvement council meeting at four thirty P.M. And December sixteenth is the planning meeting for upcoming visit of the Costa Rica students and teachers from six thirty to eight P.M. in the tap. December seventeenth, the middle and high school winter concerts, six through eight P.M. in the auditorium. And December twenty-second, the middle school talent show, it's all forty-five P.M. in the auditorium. On January fifth, two thousand sixteen, we can find each other night from five thirty to eight P.M. in the auditorium. January thirteenth, there's the national history date projects being on display with parent. January thirteenth, the national history day projects will be on display, the parent of the mouse from six to seven thirty P M in the cap.
At the college school, December fifteenth, school middle and high school, December fifteen, December nineteenth, we do a, December seventeenth, there are a hundred and thirty-six in the middle, December eighteenth, Poppy Hill, the school. December twenty-third, the holiday laser show, the holiday is happening on January fourth, at five seventy, and January the third, the holiday.
Rose L. McDonald School, December eighteenth, birthdays with the principal. December twenty-first, all school assembly, the holiday laser show at nine A M in the cafeteria. On December twenty-first, school improvement council meeting at three thirty P M. At the Spring Street School on December seventeenth, the school improvement council meeting is at two forty-five. December seventeenth and eighteenth, preschools and parties.
Is it that, just on the distance as I said, you have support. Great, thank you very much.
Basketball tournament opening in the district tomorrow, tomorrow, six thirty and seven.
Our next meeting will be January eleventh, two thousand and sixteen, at six thirty in the senior high school meeting. And before we adjourn, I would just like to, on behalf of the school committee, wish everyone and their families a very happy holiday. Have a safe season and enjoy your much deserved breaks. Move. Let's adjourn.